All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting, uh, the regular meeting of the board. Um, has, has the meeting been properly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Okay, um, in terms of attendance, um, I am filling in as chair for President Mckagg. We have trustees Kudo and Moore Baldoff and Stoker Brand and Ursing present. Do we know the status on trustees Lynn and trustee Lynn, President Mckagg? Are they with us right now?
Um, trustee Lynn is unable to attend tonight and President Mckagg may be able to join between eight and eight thirty.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Um, first two topics are under special order of business. The first is pedestrian safety efforts. Um, they'll be led by Rebecca Ewol, Village Manager, and Jeff Sponsia, Transportation Program Planning Manager for Milwaukee County. So.
I'm just gonna share my screen.
And just as a notice for update only.
So I, I have not had an opportunity, oh, Jeff, there you go. I've never had an opportunity to meet Jeff in person. I've seen him on Zoom and Teams for the last year and a half, but I just want to welcome him, um, for being here tonight. He's been gracious enough to represent Milwaukee County and some of the exciting initiatives that they have in planning and have been communicating on with our municipality over the last year. But before I turn that over to Jeff, the village board had asked that I give a little brief overview about where we've been as a village with regards to pedestrian safety efforts within, over the last 10 years. That's what brings us to this presentation tonight. Um, we have been planning for pedestrians and bicycles for a while now. You'll see we've done the Central District Master Plan, Riverside Restoration Plan, West Capital Drive Corridor Redevelopment Plan, Central District Master Plan Update, the Pet and Bike Master Plan in 2015, within Vision 2015, Vision 2025, and most recently within our transportation and parking analysis that was completed in 2020. All of these plans include very purposeful efforts to plan for pedestrian and bicycle safety within our community. On an ongoing basis, we have our Park and Open Space Committee, of which I see several representatives here tonight. They're a portion of their group and it was previously all in separate committees. So there was a separate pedestrian committee and bicycle separated up, but they've been combined into this group. And their focus, one of their focuses is on pedestrian bicycle accommodation, including pedestrian and bicycle plans and bicycle-friendly community designation. Annually, in the spring and in the winter, walk audits have been conducted routinely within the scope of our community. I'm sure the village board can recall some of the presentations that Director Price has provided from the Senior Resource Center here, concluding these off audits. The audits are done to identify both our strengths in walkability, as well as to assess areas for improvement. This board is very familiar with how we are continually ongoing in reviewing design alternatives with respect to our roadway design. So each roadway design that comes before us, they're being evaluated for pedestrian and cyclist accommodations, as well as opportunities in the future. For those of you who weren't active here in 2017, I just, I wasn't going to go back further than this, but wanted to kind of just pull out some of the things that you may notice within the scope of the community today, which was a result of us and really at that time, the pedestrian and bicycle committee really leaning into where do we need to see different signage and accommodations made to get people focused on pedestrian activities. So here you'll see the flashing signs on Capital Drive, the signs with diagonal directions at the crosswork and crosswalk on Bartlett, and with other crossings along Capital Drive, the installation of a westbound no U-turn sign on Capital Drive in New Hall, solar rectangular rapid flashing beacons, a new hall in Capital, driver speed feedback signs on Morris Boulevard at the approach to the intermediate school, converting the Bartlett crosswalk to a ladder crosswalk, and significant amount of education and time spent by the police department, really looking at how we present and provide for pedestrian and cycling accommodations. After, in conclusion of this effort, our Pet and Bike Committee had had then taken the role of ensuring that pedestrian safety information was routinely included within our publication of Shorewood Today, a quarterly magazine, and also participated in producing press releases during different educational opportunities to send messages to the community. Um, previously, there was a Fall and October Walk This Way event that the committee members put on. There was also the engagement of students to develop pedestrian cycling and a driver safety educational video for fellow students to post on the school website. The pedestrian bicycle safety information provided by the committee has also been routinely shown on the Shorewood Facebook page, and then information and key events provided in the Village Managers Memo. More recently, in 2020, we concluded the Transportation and Parking Analysis. And while you don't see the words of cyclist and pedestrian within that title, I will tell you that it was absolutely a component of discussion and education as we went through that analysis process. In there, and as we've stepped out from that analysis, the highest priorities in terms of moving within the physical environment first started with parking, but there were things that did relate that we're looking forward to moving, moving on with that do affect the physical environment for pedestrian and cyclists. We've initiated Policy 43 to evaluate residents' requests, of which there is now a formalized process to do so with, through the staff and with the board. Landscaping improvements were removed from the Capital Drive planter at the intersection of Esterbrook Parkway to allow for greater visibility. The traffic signal was evaluated at North Oakland Avenue in Kensington, which was a large topic within our community, I think about a year ago. And the decision was determined to not put a stoplight at that intersection. And transportation recommendations that will be implemented with street projects were recommended by this analysis, such as standardizing our crosswalks, reviewing transit stops, which we've been doing on every roadway reconstruction project we have, and some specific physical recommendations regarding the North Oakland Avenue Design Project. Coming up in 2024, our community is going to update and complete, well, we're going to combine our bike and our ped plans into one, because they don't work alone, but in tandem. So that will be a new change that we've not done before. And then we're also going to provide a complete streets policy for the village board to consider, which is also a recommendation of the Transportation and Parking Analysis that concluded in 2020. As I mentioned, these are the projects that this board has been very active in, the ongoing design of in the last two years. One is the CC Phase 1 design, which is currently under construction in the southeast area of the village. The Edgewood Avenue design, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with from some, one of the more recent committee meetings regarding that design. The Downer Avenue design, which is a large component of Phase 2 of the CC project occurring in 2024. The Lake Drive design and the North Oakland Avenue design. Again, in 2024, bringing us up to current day, what are we looking at to the future regarding our pedestrian and cycling efforts? Now, we will be combining the village's pedestrian and bicycle components into one plan, reviewed by one committee moving forward, creation of a complete streets policy. And then also, more recently, the participation in the Milwaukee County Department of Transportation's Alternative Program or TAP, and the US DOT Safe Streets for All Grant, which I'm going to allow Jeff to speak on a little bit more.
All right, absolutely. Uh, yeah, first of all, you know, really want to thank you all for just having us here. Our collaboration over the last, uh, several years has been really fruitful. And, you know, we at the county really applaud all of you for your efforts, you know, to improve walkability, bicycle safety, transit enhancements, and so forth. I'm, I'm happy to tell you that, you know, you are one of the municipalities we point to. You know, so, you know, you all should be very proud of that. Um, we want to keep it going, right? So, um, we all know in our county reckless driving and also, also distracted driving are concerns, you know, for each and every one of us, right? We travel countywide, right? I mean, um, those of you who live in Shorewood, you don't stay here, you know, you know, each and every day, right? You know, you travel outside. And so, um, we're carrying out what's called Complete Communities. It's a planning process, a model, all right? All right, holistic. It takes into account all ages, all abilities, all backgrounds, all modes, right? Into the transportation planning perspective. Milwaukee County DOT, we are coming here again next week with a public meeting. This, however, won't be your typical kind of, you know, long-form presentation and then, um, you know, Q and A from the audience. No, this will be a more engaging kind of meeting where we really want to hear from all of you, all the residents here. Tell us, um, what concerns you about your streets? Tell us what's, what's not working, what's unsafe, and, you know, what is working, right? And, um, your feedback will be incorporated into our county-wide Safe Streets Assessment, right? That other municipalities, they can learn from, they can compare with, and all of you will be at the table in, in this county-wide, um, no, that's. So going on to the next slide, um, just some background on it. This is funded by two different grants, which your village, you did sponsor, you did sign on, so we thank you. You know, you signed on all the way back in the application process. You supported us. And so, um, with, with these two grants, you know, we now have over $1.2 billion to help, help fund not only our county-wide Safe Streets Action Plan, but each and every one of your municipalities' Safe Streets Action Plan. And so, you know, as I mentioned, Phase 1, it's an assessment. We have public engagement opportunities all across our county. You know, we're currently in the process of scheduling 20 meetings all over the county this summer. We start actually to this Thursday, Brown Deer Greenfield, and then, you know, as I mentioned, yours is next Wednesday, um, right here in the, in the lower level, um, six o'clock. And so, as I mentioned, right, that feedback will be integrated into our plan. So why this is key? Why is it important for Shorewood to be so active and engage this plan? Well, it can help, it can help you fund future roadway or pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure improvement. So, once, um, once you have your own Safe Streets Action Plan, you know, which we are, um, on track, you know, to carry out with you all, you will then be eligible for federal funding, right? Because you have that plan. Um, I saw earlier that you will be working on the 2024 Complete Streets, um, Plan. That's great. The Action Plan provides an additional framework, you know, eight components, varying aspects of, you know, governmental oversight, um, equity considerations, transportation planning alternatives. And that whole plan then will combine with the county-wide one to make you all and us eligible for the, for the billions that are, that are part of the Biden infrastructure law. And so, um, plenty of, um, plenty of funding is out there. We're just going around to all 19 municipalities to ensure that each and every one of you are eligible. So, um, with that, happy to answer any questions.
There are just a couple more slides left. Can I get to the end of those and then?
Yeah, I would, yes, yes, please do.
So continued awareness and education, opportunity for sharing Milwaukee County's Complete Communities, opportunities for engagement. They recently came out with their schedule and how they're going to be interacting with all of the communities here. The new Park and Open Space Committee, providing continued avenues for awareness and education from the community volunteers. Similarly, we have some other committees, such as the Conservation Committee, who their committee members actually put together educational components and articles that are at times in the Village Managers Memo. They submit those every week to every other week. The Feature and Help continue to spread the word throughout the community about the different types of education and awareness we'd like our population here to partake in. And then continuing, while I recognize that now the pedestrian and bicycle committee is now combined into the Park and Open Space Committee, as I went back and looked at the last decade, I just stumbled upon a lot of very concerted community messaging that took place coming out of the public education component from the pedestrian and bicycle committees over the years, setting up a calendar and focusing their messaging to different areas of the community to ensure that they were getting the word out and providing education in other spaces. It truly does take a village, meaning that we, as a local government, are one of many participants who can be harnessed to, to provide greater opportunities for awareness and education. We play one role, recognizing that it really does truly take a lot of, of different avenues throughout the course of a community in order to make that cultural change to, to more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly communities.
All right. Uh, we have some members of the public here. Before opening up, I just want to check real quick to see if any trustees have any quick, you know, clarifying questions to answer any questions they may have on their minds.
Thank you for coming and speaking with us. I'm a little confused by the Complete Communities and the, um, the funding here. So it's 1.2 million in state and federal grants. Phase 1 will assess the current state of safety in our streets. Phase 2 talks about a $5,000 contribution from our municipality's 2024 budget. So we haven't done our budget yet. So you're asking us for $5 million? I'm sorry, $5,000? $5,000 to, because then, if we give $5,000, then we'll get more back?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, because we already pay, we already pay property taxes to the county, and we pay a wheel tax to the county. And so now you want Shorewood and our new budget to come with $5,000 for?
Yeah, so what the 5,000 will be allocated for is that, the development of the Action Plan, right? So we're, we're hiring a consultant to carry out both the county-wide Action Plan and each and every one of your municipalities' Action Plans.
So then we don't have to hire a consultant to do our Complete Streets? Is that, am I understanding this correctly? The county will be doing our?
Yeah, no, we're not saying that, but the Action Plan itself will definitely feed into the Complete Streets, um, Plan and Policies. So there is some overlap. What the good part is, is that our consultant will carry out the county-wide Action Plan. You know, they're the same ones who are doing all the other municipalities' Action Plan. And so that's why there's a cost, right? And so we're asking each and every municipality to contribute $5,000 so that you all have, have some skin in the game in our process here. So, you know, um, we'd be happy to, you know, work alongside you in other avenues, but in order for that eligibility for the future funding, which could be, could be millions.
So to be able to get some money from the Biden infrastructure, you're telling us we need to give the county $5,000?
For the Action Plan, correct.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, but, you know, each municipality's own Action Plan, you know, to hire a consultant individually, you know, would be anywhere between 25 and 50,000. So, you know, because we're doing all of them at the same time, that's how we can, you know, we're not asking you for the full cost. We're, we're paying that out of our, our one point.
But do we, do we maintain local control? We want control, right? I mean?
Absolutely.
So?
Yeah, yeah, so we would, we would.
Clear as.
Yeah, yeah, no, you would own and, you know, control all the policy in your own Action Plan. We have our, our county-wide Action Plan. That's the only thing we would actually control.
So does the bus system, is it, is it under you?
It is. It's an aspect of Milwaukee County DOT.
Probably the most valuable piece of county transportation we get from you is the buses. That's what we're most interested is maintaining or improving, increasing our buses. But that's what we want here.
That's, that sounds excellent, yeah. And, you know, that can be part of, you know, both your plan and ours.
Any other trustees have questions?
I was gonna say, thank, thank you for coming in and sharing this with us. And I think that, um, I think $5,000 is a good investment, and I appreciate the county stepping up to kind of quarterback this initiative. And I would really, you know, the process of being able to draw down federal funds can be really burdensome, especially for, uh, you know, a government like ours that we're pretty lean in terms of we have amazing staff, but they have a lot on their plates already. So knowing that the county can step up and, you know, do some of that legwork, that way we don't have to pay for it and have to put our staff a time towards it, I really appreciate. And, um, you know, I would, I would hope that we'll see more funding opportunities where there can be a county-wide approach to the, to the process that frees up our staff time and our resources to, you know, that hyper-local solution. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, I'll just add that, uh, you know, when you are working on a county-wide kind of scale, you know, that brings consistency to, to our streets, right? Like, you know, going, you know, from Shorewood into, um, you know, Milwaukee, I mean, as a driver, as a cyclist, you know, you want to know that, you know, there won't, there won't suddenly be, you know, differences in the laws, in the designs, in the striping, you know, all, all of that. And so, um, our director, Brown Martin, um, you know, her vision is to really bring, you know, a safer, holistic, and consistent, um, approach to all, all modes of transportation.
The trustees, can I see your sign?
I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I agree with trustee Baldoff. This seems like a, you know, a great investment for our community moving forward. And we always talk about working with our surrounding communities to come up with bigger solutions so we can all work together, and this fits, uh, fits that mold. So I really appreciate your work and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Would any members of the public like to speak or ask questions? And then just, please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Blackmore. I live at 4240 North Ardmore Avenue. Um, I'm here today to talk about a really specific piece of Capital Drive, and that would be the piece that is right in front of Shorewood High School. I'm here just out of a great concern for the safety of our children. So that's who I'm speaking for right now, for the students that are crossing that area, which is four lanes going across, right in front of the high school. And I really appreciated your points that you made about, a lot of them really hit home, and it's what the Bike and Safety Committee was talking about, the consistency piece, and just sort of standardizing what it's like to be a pedestrian, to be a driver. So something that we were talking about right before this meeting was if you do take a drive from Atwater, the lake, heading west, believe that's west, heading west down Capital, you'll see that all of the Capital Drive from the lake to Oakland Avenue is a very manageable two lanes. Very clearly marked, the traffic is slower. And then pretty much once you hit Oakland Avenue, unfortunately, that is where the high school is located and where the school's safety zone should be for students and for everybody. It just turns into four lanes, and it's treated like a straightaway by many people because they're looking down at the culvers that they can't wait to get to, or the next traffic light down at Morris. And if it's green, they start speeding up, and the opposite occurs as well. So when I come to many of the functions at the high school with my family, I've had to run across that stretch from Bartlett to save my life to get across because the cars that are coming east up towards the lake, I literally can see them coming faster and faster, even if they're way down at Morris. So the consistency with Capital Drive, making it a street that is safe for students to cross and for all pedestrians and bikers to cross, is what I'm here to speak to. And I'm really looking at, um, not, not something that happens five years from now, although I do understand things take time, but I'm really looking for the board and for them to rely on the wonderful volunteer work of the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Committee to explore what are some short-term goals, what are some long-term goals, what are the costs, what are some of these TAP funds we can take advantage of and other things, to really put together something that is responding to the increased reckless driving that we are seeing, unfortunately, and, you know, making, making us as parents feel better when we are seeing our kids go off to school every morning and going to the, the middle school and the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, members of the trustees. Thank you for your service. My name is Sandy Pendleton. I live at 3529. My name is Sandy Pendleton. I live at 3529 North Frederick Avenue. I serve on the Bike Fed Safety Subcommittee and I serve on the Parks and Public Spaces Committee. Being a walkable and bikeable community is Shorewood's competitive, sustainable advantage. Demand for property insured will increase because people want to live in walkable and bikeable communities. And there are very few opportu- options for such in this area. Sadly though, because other communities are moving more fast than we are, we are losing the traditional competitive advantage we've had in this area. We are losing that reputation we had for being innovative and progressive and forward-thinking and willing to do something different in our community because we've moved too slowly. We want people to walk and bike more. That's because it's great for individual health. It's great for the health of our planet and it is good for property value. Young people who are looking to buy houses want houses that are in walkable and bikeable communities. They want to be able to ensure that their kids, when they head off to school, can get there safely, walking or biking. Right now, we have a problem. Too many of our streets are not designed like village streets. They are designed like city streets. We are a village. We have some parts of Capitol and Oakland that are village streets. They're pleasant to walk on. They're pleasant to bike on. They're green. Right? They're, they're a good place to locate a school, for instance, Atwater. We have other parts of Capitol and Oakland which are designed like city streets. And they are not pleasant to walk on. They are not pleasant to bike on. They are not safe to cross as a pedestrian. The problem is our design in those two areas of, of Capitol and Oakland. That's the river to Oakland and then Capitol to Edgewood on Oakland. The design is first and foremost, it's way too car-centric, right? We are prioritizing the needs and desires of drivers on those stretches of Capitol and Oakland. The travel lanes are too wide and that contributes to excess speed. There's a complete absence on those streets and any other street in Shorewood of protected bike lanes. That is the gold standard. That's the world-class standard. That's the standard we be, should be shooting for in terms of a network of protected bike lanes. But that makes streets safer for all because it contributes to traffic calming. Also, the traffic lights that we have on Capitol and Oakland, they create a feeling of impatience in drivers because drivers get stopped at a red light. And then they have this feeling that they need to rush through the next one to the next one. And that contributes to yellow and red light running. And it contributes to a feeling of ownership of the right of way by drivers compared to the way a village street should exist. So make no small plans, a wise man once say, once said. When we do come up to the next five-year plan, it's not enough that we say, well, we're going to tweak this or we're going to tweak that. We need to come into that with the idea that we are failing in those stretches of our village streets at this time. We don't just need a complete streets policy. We need a strong complete streets policy. And we need to implement that prop, that policy at every opportunity because change now is too slow. It's glacial. The village must be willing to be innovative, like Whitefish Bay has been innovative with their, some, their temporary pedestrian islands over by Coles and Target. Very interesting approach, like the city of Milwaukee has been over on Fratney. When they're, where they've created temporary pedestrian bump outs with bollards. Or the city of Milwaukee has done over at Hartwood and Lake Drive. We don't have anything like that in the village of Shorewood. So I'm hoping that these comments about pedestrian and bike safety and the poor current designs of certain streets in our village will help in the process both this year and next year. This should not have a dramatic fiscal impact because good, well-designed streets don't cost any more than poorly designed streets. And I'll finish with saying, the good people on the Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee saved the village $63,000 this year by indicating to the village that there was a multi-use trail that was slated for construction this year that could, we could better use those funds someplace else. So we've got $63,000 of fund money that we can use to improve available funds. Let's use that term instead of fund money. Available funds that we can use to make some improvements, hopefully this year on Capitol Drive, near the high school and on Oakland Drive, Oakland Avenue, near the high school. Again, thank you for your service and thank you very much for the consideration of my comments.
Thank you. Would any other members of the public like to speak?
Yes. Hello, I'm Vashti Lozier, 2535 East Lake Bluff Boulevard. I'm the facilitator for the Shorewood Connects Program, which is a community outreach arm of the Senior Resource Center and also coordinates age-friendly initiatives in the village. And I just wanted to, I think Sandy spoke very well and I don't have a lot to add, but I just wanted to say that older and disabled residents, a lot of people live in Shorewood, not just young families, but people who are older and disabled and rely on walking and biking and alternative methods to get around town. Some, some of them cannot drive. They're also relying heavily on public transit. So complete streets are super important to look at the design when we look at redesigning these streets as they come up to factor in the transit, factor in the walkers, the pedestrians, the bikes, all of that. Because I think that's why people move to Shorewood and that's why people live here. And it's super important. I wanted to point out how well I thought Wilson Drive was done. I thought that process was really great and that resident input was valuable in that process. So I just want to encourage as these projects come up that you involve residents and you involve the Ped Bike Subcommittee because there are great resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public present want to speak? Would any members of the public who are joining us remotely would like to speak? All right, seeing none. Trustees, any further questions, comments? Trustee Yersink? Trustee Stoker Brand? Trustee Kudo?
Nothing other than I tend, frankly, I tend to agree with the analysis of Oakland and Capitol. They're both pretty awful and would look forward to any and all recommendations that come from Bike and Ped Safety, especially as it relates to, actually not, especially for both of them. They, they both need a tremendous amount of work.
All right.
So I was coming eastbound on Capitol Drive from Brookfield last week and I was struck by, I don't know if you know this, but there are huge, they've put Capitol Drive on a road diet. And there are huge bump outs, concrete bump outs. And I can't quite figure out, they left not a bike lane, but they, between the curb and this concrete bump out that is actually an island. Traffic, they left base. Are you at all familiar with this? And do you know?
Yeah, yeah, somewhat.
I don't think it was in Tosa. I think it was in the city.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. The city of
So what is that? Do you know?
Yeah, that gap is just, you know, for the rainwater or, you know, any other types of, you know.
Okay. I, I'd be curious to see what the feedback is, you know, about bicycles and that versus, you know, for maintenance. I just, I'd never seen it before. So thank you. I look forward to hearing about it.
Trustee Yersink?
I just want to thank the residents for coming out and speaking on, on behalf of Bike and Ped Safety. It's, it's a super important topic. I know the time that I've been on the board, this is something that we've talked about quite a bit. And I know there's a lot of support from us to make this community more safe for bikers, for pedestrians. I really appreciate Mr. Pendleton's passion. You know, and I think it's, it's just trying to figure out how to put all these pieces together to make it work because a lot of these ideas that we have are, are very, very good ideas. But it affects other things in the village and those things that we, we have to take effect and we have to take account for the things that get affected for, for one thing. So I think in, in general, we're all very, very supportive of, of pet and bike safety. And, you know, I, I, you know, I agree with all of you and the comments that you've made today. So I really appreciate you guys coming in and, and making those comments and making your voices heard.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate a lot of, a lot of food for thought and definitely taking everything you're saying into consideration. So thank you for that. All right, I guess with, Madri, do you have anything to add? All right. Thank you for coming in and laying this all out.
Yeah, just to end, I hope to see all of you on the 15th in the lower level.
No, sounds great. Thank you.
6:00 PM.
And it's not in this building. My guess is it's in below the library in the Village Center. I think so. Would be my guess.
We like to keep it confusing. No, no.
Great. Next item on the agenda is consider mission and goals for EDI Strategic Plan with Dr. Blanks. Good evening.
Y'all are doing well.
Yes, Dr. Blanks. I'm doing quite lovely. Thank you.
Good, good to know. Most of this presentation is a draft of, is a draft of the vision, mission, statements that we worked on last meeting. And I identified, so this is a partnership where we're creating, I'm working with you to create the mission, the vision, the goals, the outcomes. And so if we go to the next slide, you'll find that what I've identified as your work plan responsibilities were part of the actual work plan that was presented a couple of months ago. And it basically says the board takes a leadership role in identifying the village commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion by creating the vision, mission and outcomes. So the purpose of my meeting with you today is to review the draft, vision, mission, operas- operationalization of values and goals, which is taken from your input using the Mentimeter process to discuss possible outcomes and to discuss the process for creating and finalizing outcomes. So the next slide shows the vision that I created based on your input. And I'm not going to read that, but would definitely ask for your input, any wordsmithing or concerns you might have with it. If you don't have any concerns or if you have some now, you may also have some once we go through the mission, the values and the goals. So you can, you know, once you get a clear picture of what all four of those are, we can circle back.
This is really nice.
Oh, thank you. So let me know if you're ready to move to the mission.
Trustees, we're ready? All right. Yes, please proceed.
Okay. So the next slide shows the mission. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I was just gonna say, I think you captured what we talked about really well with both of these. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good to know. I pride myself on listening.
Trustee Stoker Brand?
I have a question about, yes, the can't think of the word that I want, but in, you know, the use of words like eliminate, insure. It makes me wonder, do we want to say try to insure, try to eliminate? I mean, I guess the, the mission is to not do anything. Mission is to not put any sort of a qualifier. Being realistic. Knowing that these are goals. So this is something that not necessarily you want to say, try to. We're saying mission is to eliminate, to insure.
Right. And with the mission, you want to use action words when possible. If there are other action words that you think soften, but still maintain the same thought. That's a possibility. The vision is something you aspire to. And then the mission, you are still aspiring, but you want it to be more concrete. That here are some things we will work to accomplish. And so, yes, I would say try to intend to sort of let you off the hook. You can always say, well, we tried. Whereas with this, I think you want to say, no, these are, this is what we value and this is what we will work to achieve. But again, if, if these action words are things that you feel are too strong.
Well, I wonder if they could be subjective to the point that you know, one person's idea of ensuring and eliminating could be different than another person. I guess that's what, you know, the, the subjectivity that, that comes in here. And who's mine?
Right. And I think what I would say is I think almost all language has that subjectivity built in. Even if we said try, some people would say, well, what do you mean? Does that mean write something or do? But if we can go to the other two, maybe these, the opera, opera, I don't know why I'm struggling with that word.
No, but I don't like that word either. I'm hoping we can come up with something besides.
Operationalization or actualizing again. You know, it's what you're comfortable with. So with these values, again, what I tried to do was identify the values based on your input. And I know in some cases in our last meeting, a few of you indicated that you had looked at other communities statements of equity. So I went back to those and looked at those and used some of the language that you had given me, but made sure that the way I used it wasn't just verbatim from them because you're not them. You are unique. And I wanted you to have unique statements reflecting those core values or, for instance, part of the values in others and that were important here too, was the idea of integrity and transparency. The idea of no, community norms, the idea of teamwork, innovation and evaluation. Those are important to Shorewood. Those are important to other communities. But we can state them in a way that doesn't seem like we're just connecting with what others are doing without looking at our uniqueness.
Yeah, I, I was kind of approaching, I had some similar initial reactions to trustee Stoker Brandon saying those. But I mean, to your point, I mean, this is aspirational and, you know, there'll, there'll be debates over what is an unbiased outcome or what is a systemic barrier and what's not. And that's going to have to be for us to sort that out. You know, because we're all coming and are, you know, the lucky folks who follow us. So we're all becoming from, you know, to this work with different perspectives that'll have to be hammered out. But I think, I think what's up there, I mean, certainly makes sense to me as it is.
If I could add something, I, I like having the strong action words. I wouldn't, I would not be in favor of softening them. And on the section, you know, with the values, instead of operationalization.
Yeah, thank you.
Could, if, I really thought about that and was hoping I would say it correctly. Can we say like, our values in action?
Oh, sure.
Because I think that's something we, you know, you want to live your values all the time. live your values all the time and always be putting them to action.
Any other, oh, any other trustee comments? Sorry.
I just want to, um, go back and say the two words that I thought might create questions or concerns are ensure the unbiased outcomes and eliminate the system, systemic barriers. And so hopefully the, our values in action give, um, cleaner look or more specific, uh, idea of why those, why the mission is important. And then when we get to the goals, I think it shows the specific areas that you want to focus on. So are you ready to discuss goals and outcomes?
Yep, I think we're ready.
Okay. So the thing about strategic planning, I think y'all would agree is that when it comes to talking about goals, objectives, outcomes, strategies, tactics, they can all become somewhat merged and confusing which one is which. And so what I wanted to do is simply talk about goals and outcomes for planning being the goals, which are the umbrella spectrum or the broader picture and the outcomes being specific and precise. Uh, the goals aren't measurable, but the outcomes are observable and measurable. And so the goals on the next slide are how the organization puts its values in action and aspires to achieve the vision and mission. So these are more concrete, but still not necessarily measurable. Any questions?
Trustee Stoker Brand.
Um, number seven. So is 20, where, do we have like a baseline that we're going to look for the change going forward? You know what I'm saying?
We have some data, some baseline. You know, for instance, in hiring, though I know, uh, it's been stated and, and I totally connect with the idea, we're not looking for quotas and, or anything like that, but we do have baseline of how diverse the village is in hiring based on, uh, residency and race. You know, so we have that.
And so you would use, I mean, you would look at village population versus a Milwaukee county. Like obviously the number of people of color in Shorewood is going, the ratio is going to be very different.
Right. Especially if you're talking about residency. If you're talking about hiring, the thing that's interesting is that only about 25% of village employees live in Shorewood. You draw your employees from nine different counties. So the opportunity to hire a more diverse workforce exists because you're not pulling just from Shorewood. You're pulling from those nine counties. About 25% come from Milwaukee. And then the rest, the 50% are dispersed throughout Milwaukee County and, and other counties. So that's an opportunity to look at how to increase the diversity because of of the pool you're drawing from. But also when you look at outcomes, you could look at contracting. Uh, we talked about before, there's a DBE provision, but there's no process to achieve utilization of disadvantaged minority or women owned businesses. So we could see where we start now as being, um, no identified disadvantaged minority women, business owners being brought into the system and see where we go in say six to 12 months. But part of it could also be having, as we talk about outcomes, identifying more specific measurements that you want.
When it comes to the, the hiring, or I'm sorry, the purchasing and contracting. To me, this is a place where Milwaukee County should really be leading. I mean, it'd be like, do we have, does our staff have a place to go? To look for those, to connect with those businesses? I mean, because to me, like this is where this screams county should be a leader here.
If you're talking about, are you talking about the businesses, the, the contract, the businesses that the?
Coming up with a, a list of vetted contractors. That's, that's all that. So we can just go to the county, county website or?
Well, actually what I had, um, indicated in a meeting a couple of months ago is developing a resource guide that I'll present to you.
So I'm surprised, like, we don't have that? Like the county doesn't have that for municipalities to use?
Well, what the county has, when you're talking about businesses is a certification process. They're part of the unified certification program that I believe part, some departments at the state level, the county and others participate in. And actually my business, Cairo Communications, it went through that process. So we're certified. Um, part of what I intend on doing is talking with Lamont Robinson. He's the head of the, I think the latest name is Community Partnership Division, and they are part of the group that certifies businesses. They have, you can go on their website or other websites. And that's what I'll do to make sure you have access to their list. Their list, the unified certified list should give you, um, businesses, not just certified by Milwaukee County, but by state agencies as well.
Trustee Baldoff, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, um, you know, I really appreciate all the work you've done and we have so enjoyed, um, having you
Thank you.
guide us through this process and to continue to work with you. And I'm ready to make a motion whenever people are ready to entertain one. So.
Do you have any more to share?
The main thing I wanted to share is if you turn to, um, just briefly, the next slide deals with outcomes. And you can see that the possible factors, but also the next slide talks about examples of outcomes. So there are many ways to develop these and what I need to know from you, because I know some of you are very interested in data and measurable outcomes is do you want me to go back and come back with some recommended outcomes after I've done more research, worked with the internal work group more? How would you want me to proceed with outcomes that you can use to measure actually whether or not the strategic plan is effective?
Set within the scope of this?
Meaning that this is a presentation.
Right.
So this item's not listed for action.
Okay.
Okay.
But if there's, you know,
Yeah, I mean,
feedback we'd like to provide.
Okay. Got it. Okay. I, I was just wanting, just wanted to make sure. Trustee Kudo.
Something is no surprise to you, Dr. Blanks. I'm interested in concrete. So, you know, I want to see it's sort of going off of trusty stock brands. What's our baseline? You know, where, where do we, where do we want to get?
Okay.
And then what we want to be, and then what opportunities and costs are there to get there? Right? So you know, I mean, this, this, this is all great. I just, I feel like if I'm voting on a vision and a mission, right, eventually, I need what's A, B, C, X, Y, Z to get there? And what recommendations do you have?
Okay.
That we can implement that will actually do some, you know, do something constructive.
Okay. So if I'm hearing you correctly, when the strategic plan is in development and near completion, I should be able to tell you for every part of the strategic plan, what the opportunities are or the tools that can be used to implement that part of the strategic plan. I should be able to tell you the cost of that. And I should be able to tell you outcomes you can use to measure or gauge whether or not the plan is being successfully implemented.
I think so. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's more, you know, it's one of those if I can't, if I can't measure it, I don't know if it's successful or not. And so, but I completely rely on you frankly, to tell me what those things might be and then what the measurables, what appropriate measurables are and deliverables. That's, for me, that's what interests me. It's, it's what can the, you know, what ordinance can we pass? What practice can we start or continue? In the same way that the county recognizes us as a leader in transportation and, and pedestrian. I want to ma- maintain our status as a leader here.
Okay.
So that other county, other municipalities can say Shorewood did these three things. This is where they think it's going. We should go with them.
Okay. And I'm.
But I only speak for me. I don't speak for the whole board. So.
I, I concur with that. I, we, you know, value your expertise and, you know, helping us determine what are the right things to hold ourselves and the village and staff accountable to. From my perspective, and also I apologize for jumping the gun on a motion because these slides were not in the packet. It ended at goals. So I thought that was all we were talking about.
I just would, like, I would have never thought of purchasing in a million years. It just would never have crossed my mind. So when you brought that up a long time ago, it was like, oh, right. Of course, we're only going here. We, there are other places. So stuff like that.
Okay.
Trustee Stoker Brand.
So we can get this added somehow to our, so we can see this after the meeting?
Yes. Um, when, um, Dr. Blanks had initially submitted her information for the packet, it did, was not accompanied by the presentation. And so I had retouched, reconnected with her today and said, hey, just want to double check because we had a number of presentations. I wanted to make sure that they were loaded at my desktop and she had sent one over. So we will, um, you know, recombine the packet and place it on the website. But that is, I apologize trustee Moore Baldoff. That's why I was confused. We do have a motion on, um, that for the board's consideration and accepting the, the, um, the equity statement. But I did not see that there was other, you know, examples or follow-up questions that you would have.
That, that motion could include because it's underneath that is the vision, the mission, the, um, action of values, um, and the goals, right? We'll be approving all that if we approve the equity statement, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so I just wanted to be clear. At the end of September, if, if I'm remembering the timeline correctly, we will have a five-year strategic plan.
Right.
Right? And then at that point, um, you know, I would support what trustee Kudo said, those ideas about, um, concrete, you know, more concrete things. And then of course I would be interested in knowing what we can do on our own versus continuing to hire consultants. I know you have said we probably, we might need more help in the future. I'm, you know, I'm open to that, but obviously, um, we'd have to look at that and the timing will be perfect because the budget put together in September. So, um.
Right. And, um, my intention is to bring you a five-year strategic plan that has everything that you put, that you have identified you want in there. That addresses the environmental scan and work plan. And that is something that the village can implement without a consultant. There will be no attached costs and, and you won't hear me saying, but you need me to do this. If the village in moving forward needs to contact me to ask a question or that kind of thing, I will be available. But it's, I'm not presenting you a plan, so you will need to go out to rehire me or hire anyone else. It should be doable, uh, internally.
Uh, trustee, you're saying? All right. Um, do you have what you need from us or?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We do need a motion.
Uh, yeah, so trustee Baldoff?
I can make it. I moved to approve the Village of Shorewood equity statement as presented. Or should I make the note? If people agree with our values and action. Do we need that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right. I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you for your time, Dr. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Items under the consent agenda may be acted upon by one motion. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Like, uh, remove item B.
Okay. All right, uh, remove.
I'd like to remove item E as in Edward and, um, I as in Idaho and J as in Julie.
Okay. Any others?
There's already left.
Uh, all right. Uh, so, um, all in favor of proving the consent agenda with the exceptions of items B, E, I, and J? So aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Item B.
Second time we've talked about this one. Uh, you know, again, you know, it, this goes back to the incident that happened on May 1st, uh, between the village president and I. I just still don't believe that these minutes accurately reflect what happened in that meeting. There was certainly a video recording somewhat with some video and audio issues. You know, I I'm sort of basic here. I haven't asked for anything else. I haven't moved forward with, you know, stuff like censure vote or anything along those lines. I think it's important that we accurately reflect what happened in these meetings. And in that meeting, the village president basically challenged me to a fight outside. And it got heated enough that the village manager, in her wisdom, thankfully, asked us to take a break. And so, you know, for me, this, this doesn't pass muster on minutes. It's, it looks as though I made a motion to change some wording. We took a two-minute break and nothing happened. And we came back and the motion passed.
Um, Andrew Wong.
Oh, I was just gonna, um, let everyone know that President McCaig just entered the meeting.
Okay.
So again, respectfully, I'd like to add, you know, why the most, why the village manager called for the break? What, what happened that led to that? Because it's not clear in the video, even though some of us have talked about it's, it's available. And I'm not asking for, you know, a blow by blow, but that's poor choice of words. I'm not asking for a, any verbatim back and forth, but this falls, I think, well outside of the regular minutes, regular recurrence that happens at these meetings. And to just put it down to this, I think, doesn't accurately reflect what happened.
I just wanted to share with trustee Kudo.
Yeah.
I just want to let you know, I looked back at prior minutes where recess had occurred and just followed the same format. So you guys can discuss as a group and however you.
Yeah. I mean, no, like, I mean, I'm not upset about it. I'm not.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to let you know. Cause for me it was.
Sure. Yeah. I just, it was, it was. I just, it was, it was a night, right? And, you know, and I know that we've kind of, some folks have joked about it. It, I don't think it's terribly funny looking back on it. And I think that we just, you know, the record deserves to be complete.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Do you have language you'd like to propose and we can put up for a vote?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, even something as basic as there, you know, there was, like, why did we call for the, why did the village manager call for the break? You know, there was a heated discussion. The, and we can, we can paint it however we want, we can say whatever we want. Everyone in this room knows I was challenged to a fight by the village president in a meeting.
I would disagree strongly with that characterization, which is part of the problem in trying to rewrite. Will you let me finish, please? Thank you. It could be characterized as a joke, right? I mean, there's any number of ways of characterizing it. You know, you interrupted the president when she was speaking, you raised her voice at her. She responded in what seemed to me in a level tone as I watched with, you know, a poorly chosen joke. I'll concede, but, I mean, I don't think that that, I've seen far more acrimonious disputes in this room, you know, where the minutes were not, did not go into detail as trustee, I'm sorry, as manager Ewald makes. So I don't disagree strongly with the thought that, you know, this one does. And I think it sets a very not great precedent for the future.
So I, I mean, having been in the room, having been the person that the, that the language was directed towards, I didn't take it as a joke. I thought it was ridiculous, but I didn't think it was a joke. You know, and I frankly, I would challenge anyone's room. If I were to do the same thing to someone else in this room, or if I were to do the same thing to trustee Stokbrand or trustee Morbaldoff, we wouldn't, this wouldn't look like this. We wouldn't just be saying it was a poor choice of words, it was just a joke. It would be, I threatened, I suggested that myself and someone else go outside and resolve an issue that should never have been, I mean, if it went the other way, this wouldn't be two lines on minutes. This would be, Eric Kudo threatened the village president to go outside in terminology that we all understand what it means, whether it was a joke or not. And I'm not asking for, again, I'm not asking for censure or any specific motion or ethics or anything other than this is what happened in the meeting and what happened in the meeting should be reflected in the minutes. And then we put this to bed and we move on.
Trustee Baldoff.
Potential thing, and did you have something you wanted to say, trustee Stokbrand? It looked like you did earlier. Okay. I would be in favor generally, I understand and appreciate that manager Ewald followed the past practice. I would be in favor generally of if there is a recess or break, noting briefly what the reason was for any reason. I think that's a transparency thing. Is it because of a technical failure? Because, you know, a weather incident, like a bathroom break? I think a very brief reason, and in this case, it could be, you know, because of a heated discussion and leave it at that. I don't think it's going too far to offer a brief reason when we have a break because, you know, in my experience, we haven't taken a ton of breaks during meetings. And I don't think it's unreasonable to let people know why we are stopping our work. So that's just my perspective.
So when, the reason I called the recess is because there was disagreement and was going off topic to what action needed to take place? And I find your suggestion, yeah, I mean, moving forward, we can note something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that exactly what you said would be, you know, recess, heated discussion that went off topic. Okay, to me, that's very reasonable.
I'm sorry.
Do you need a motion on that to direct staff to do that or do we take a vote?
Oh, well, on language or whatever, this can.
I mean, if we're making this kind of a decision, perhaps we should codify it with a vote.
Did trustee Ursink have something?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So something that I've been really thinking about a lot is, is actually connecting our minutes with the YouTube video. Because right now, we put a four-hour YouTube video out there that nobody in their right mind can find anything that they want to find in that video. And I think just as we create links in our, in our agendas now, we can easily create links in the YouTube video. I know it's a little bit extra work, but as long as we're timestamping things while we're working on them, we can easily create links to the YouTube videos. So if anybody has, wants to go back and watch something, they can go back and watch that. And I think that would be very helpful for the public or it'd be very helpful for anybody watching any of the YouTube videos out there that are not sort of chapter marked or linked. So that would be, you know, my suggestion moving forward, doesn't really help this matter, but, but I think it's, it would be a valuable sort of, valuable time spent is to make that connection to the minutes and the actual video recording.
Okay, while I appreciate your suggestion, we have contemplated and twice in this municipality since I've been here, reviewed and actually received proposals for software that does such a thing. It does take time. And for the number of views that we get on these videos, I can justify that.
I get it, I get it.
And I find that if someone actually wants to find something in the video with the timestamp, you do have an ability to go and look.
Do we timestamp our minutes properly so it could, so somebody can?
We've been noting the time and I am tracking it right now. We started this discussion on item 5B at 8:43 PM.
Okay.
So, and I'm not trying to, like, I have just seen this discussion.
I didn't want to strike a nerve there, I just, I apologize. Yeah.
And, and each time, we have ended up in the same spot. So, and I'm not, don't misunderstand my comments as being frustrated with you, but I'm like, this conversation needs to stop. Because there's been way too much time just put into that process, much less anything else. So if we could focus on these minutes, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right, is there a motion?
We could defer again, correct, until we get language we agree on? I mean, do you have, do you have language you'd like to see?
I mean, I'm fine with the language that trustee Morbaldoff put forward. I mean, again, like, this is, this is about having accurate representation of what happened in that meeting available. And if somebody wants to go back and look at the video, they can.
I would be willing to try to make a motion then, if that's helpful, because I would not be in favor of deferring this again. I appreciate that trustee Stokbrand offered a suggestion that, you know, we want to get it right. But I think we've spent a lot of time talking about this and everybody wants to move forward. So it, my suggestion, if people are open to it, is move to amend the minutes from the May 1st meeting to include a, the reason for manager Ewald calling for a recess. And that reason can be a heated discussion veered off topic. Or whatever the, you know, distinct diversion of that is.
I mean, it seems nuanced, though, just a conversation off topic? I mean, heated conversation, you know, what's, I guess, what, how do we define heated? You know, I know it was heated, but who defines that then? You know, what, who defines those nuances of, of the recess? So, I mean, the conversation went off topic, but who defines the fact that it was heated and what does that even mean?
I think we do.
Yeah, we do, but like, in future, like, who's gonna, who's gonna be the judge of a heated conversation? As opposed to a conversation that just goes off topic and, you know, so.
Again, if we can minimize subjectivity in, in how we impose that, I think.
Well, that's, I mean, from the person who called the recess? Honestly, I was looking at the agenda, I was, you guys were off topic. Like, I.
We go off topic other times, though, and we don't take a break. We say we're going off topic and then we change, refocus the discussion, we don't take a break. This was very different.
Fair, but the disagreement, they were disagreeing. They can take a disagreement out of this room if they'd like to. They can keep it in this room if they'd like to, but it was unproductive with respect to the item at hand on the agenda.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be in favor of off topic, but outside of that, I wouldn't be in favor of anything else. Do we figure out the language in the motion? I don't think we, we came to that conclusion.
I mean, I offered language, you know, if it's not going to get a second or it's not going to get the votes, I'll amend it. Or if somebody else wants to take a stab, I'll withdraw it.
Can we repeat the motion, please? The amended minutes.
Trustee Morbaldoff moved to amend the minutes from the May 1st, 2023 meeting minutes to include reasoning for manager Ewald calling for the recess. And I did add, due to the contentious off-topic discussion between trustee Kudo and President McKay.
I mean, I think that you actually phrased that better than I did. And I don't think it even has to be who it was between, but contentious off-topic conversation, I think, gets at it. But again, that's, if it's not going to get a second or if it's not going to get votes, I could rephrase that.
It was well done, Toya.
It was, yeah, you said it much better than I did. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any conversation, discussion? All right, so what is, so what direction are you taking from this then?
Well, there's a motion and a second, so now, and there's no further discussion, so you would call for the vote.
Okay, so what is the language that we would be using then?
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, can you repeat it?
Trustee Morbaldoff moved to amend the minutes from the May 1st, 2023 meeting to include the reason for manager Ewald to call the recess due to the contentious off-topic conversations. And it was seconded by trustee Stokbrand.
All right, let's do a vote. Do a roll call vote.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Nay.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Nay.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Nay.
Trustee Kudo?
Nay.
President McKay?
Aye.
Motion failed 5-4, or 4-2, sorry.
I mean, I, I would be supportive of that language if we drop contentious.
I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
I think it's.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, that motion failed.
Failed, so there needs to be another motion made.
I will leave it to somebody else. I tried.
I think it's important that President McKay's name be in the, be in the minutes because it wasn't just a discussion, a contentious, off-focused discussion between just anybody. It was between the president and a trustee. And so I think it's important to, to correct the language.
I'm perfectly comfortable having, I was part of the contentious session.
I would make a motion.
Okay.
After the part where it says trustee Kudo suggested changing the wording and members of the board discussed the changes requested. I would just add a sentence that said, President McKay challenged trustee Kudo's language. Actually, I would put that trustee changed, suggested changing the wording, comma, President McKay challenged his language, comma, and board members discussed the changes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
You got that.
Can you repeat that?
Trustee Kudo suggested changing the wording, comma, President McKay challenged his change, comma, and members of the board discussed the changes. It's not a piece.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, do a roll call vote.
President McKay?
Nay.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Nay.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Nay.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
So it's even. They'll fail.
All right.
So there can be another motion, the item can be deferred.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes with the amended language proposed by trustee Baldoff minus the word contentious, if that works.
A little bit, I apologize for this, but, or Carol, can you read the motion? I'm sorry.
Um, trustee Arndorfer?
Yep.
So trustee Arndorfer moved to amend the minutes from May 1st, 2023 to include the reason, the same thing as trustee Morbaldoff said, the reason for manager Ewald calling the recess due to off-topic conversations.
I'll second that, like, I just want to get this item clear and we can either vote for it or vote it down, but I don't want to spend all night on this.
All right, all right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Trustee Kudo?
I didn't know how to raise my hand. This is President McKay.
Yes.
Am I recognized?
Yes.
Okay. Manager, actually procedurally, manager Ewald asked for a recess and I granted it.
Okay.
So do you want to add that to the minutes as well then? Seems like it would be.
Yes, please.
Important to include that if that's the procedural way it happened.
Mm-hmm, yes, please.
Can we do that or do we need to proceed with the vote?
Ranger friendly.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's important to put in here, I didn't have anything to do with the off-topic debate. And because we're not saying whom it was between, I'm being lumped in a group discussion that I had nothing to do with. It was between two people. And I think unless President McKay is mentioned in the discussion, it doesn't accurately, accurately reflect what happened and the role that other trustees did not play in it.
I mean, I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. I mean, the old, there's 99% chance we're never going to come to agreement on contentious knock, I mean, we were all, well, let's see, Arndorfer wasn't here that night, but. Let's see, Arndorfer wasn't here that night, but has since watched it. You know? It's like a big whitewashing of what happened that night. Because it's just hard. You know, it, what happened is what happened. We were all in the room. We all were saw it later. We all knew it was heated. We all knew that a break was a great idea. You know, we could go back and forth as to whether or not. Folks thought it was a joke, but like this is. This just boggles my mind that. That we have done so much work together like this. And now we're, you know, we have a situation like that come up. And it's going to get reduced down to. We had a disagreement and there was a break. Because that's not what happened. There wasn't, it wasn't just a quick disagreement that we had a break. But out of respect for y'all, if, if someone wants to put a motion together and we can get it passed, I'm not going to stand in the way, but everyone in this room knows that's not what. That's not what went down then.
All right. Please.
Is there a second?
Uh, trustee Morbaldoff. Oh, okay.
Trustee Arndorfer moved to amend the minutes from the May 1st, 2023 meeting to include manager Ewald requesting a recess and it being granted by President Mckegg due to the off topic conversation seconded by trustee Morbaldoff.
Any issue? All right. Let's take a roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Kudo?
Can I abstain until the end?
Sure. Um, trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Nay.
Trustee Kudo?
Nay.
Motion carry four two.
All right, item E.
Thank you. Um, I just found out today that Michael Dawson, uh, has termed out on the CDA. And because this came up. Uh, it's the first I've seen of it, I heard of it, and to have, um, that spot filled since it's such an important position in the community. And we haven't met for a couple of months. I'm wondering if I would move to defer the, um, the CDA appointment. Until the next meeting at least, so that we can let people know that there was an opening. Were there a lot of other applicants or was, was one put forth by someone? I. It's an important position, and I think for it to come through with a little transparency is troubling. Do you have any feedback on the process?
So would you like for me to give you the list of people who did?
Oh, there was more than one?
No, no, I mean, just in general.
The CDA.
Oh.
I'm just referring to the CDA.
This went through the standard annual committee.
I'm sorry.
This went through the standard annual.
I don't know if your mic is on.
It, it, can you hear me now?
Better.
Time.
I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry.
Sure, I can talk closer. Um, this was the annual appointment process for, that's done every year for committees and appointments. Um, Clerk Harold worked on that. I don't know, Toya, if you have. So it was done with the same level of effort and routine that all other groups.
And it came through JP and L.
Oh, yes, right, last meeting.
Yep.
It did, okay.
Forgot about that.
And if I recall correctly, it, we were all unanimous on all of these.
Okay, all right.
So I can state that, um, with Mike Dawson's term expiring on 531, um, there was one vacancy. And so the vacancy was filled with Mitch Opera Ling's, um, application. As he stated, the first option was the CDA. That was his first option.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
All right, I'll make a motion then if the chair is ready. I move to approve all recommended appointments and reappointments as slated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, I had a question, and I don't know who is here from staff. This, um, right of way for Seviche, it says it's contingent upon approval from the Olsen House. And I would hesitate to approve something until, maybe it's in the document. I didn't see that it was approved by Olsen House. Or is it they just won't put the table in front of Olsen House unless they get their approval? I guess I would like to know that that neighbor knows and has approved before I vote on this.
I don't have capability to pull this up on my screen.
My, my understanding from the reading, and I could be wrong though, is that they have requested a number of tables and just one of them would be located in front of the Olsen House. So we would be permitting, we would be saying, you can do these. All of these, but the one Olsen House has to say yes to. So we're saying, yes, they get to do all the other ones. And we're saying, yes, you can also do that Olsen House table if Olsen House says it's okay. That's my reading of this. But I, yeah, attorney.
Okay. Then I will move to approve, um, special privilege approval for outdoor seating in the sidewalk public right of way of Seviche 4330 North Oakland Avenue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
No, I think this is fantastic. It's a, there used to be outdoor seating with Chocolate Factory. Now they're having eating on Lake Bluff as well as Oakland. Great.
Agreed. All right. Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jay.
Uh, I had a question about this one, too. Um, apparently it's not for the beach. It's for the park. Uh, and I just have concerns about the neighborhood. Uh, it's a seven hour cabaret license in a residential neighborhood. I understand it, it ends at eight o'clock, but. I think this could be a problem in the neighborhood. Apparently it's not a live band.
No.
It's, um, someone's bringing a speaker. Uh, I just, I think apparently it's for a birthday party. I would rather see someone have a birthday party without a speaker that's going to be going for seven hours in a residential neighborhood. So I'll be voting no.
I have a point of clarification. Or may, I don't know, maybe it's not. This is for Attorney Bear. Even with a cabaret license, they're still subject to noise ordinances, correct? So if it was too loud or there was a complaint. I think that might go a long way into alleviating some of your concerns, at least.
Very small park.
All that notwithstanding, it still falls within the norse, noise ordinance for the village. So I'll be voting yes.
Any further discussion?
Uh, you know, and, and I just want a clarification. It's not exactly one to eight, but it's going to fall within that window. So it's not going to be the seven, potentially not going to be seven hours, but it, it could be anywhere from one to eight PM.
You don't know that.
Based on my conversation with the applicant, yes.
And so this is at the, like the, like up by like the playground equipment at Atwater Beach, right, is what we're talking about? Like not actually on the beach?
Right, it's in the park.
The park, yeah. I think this is great. I'm really, I mean, like, I'm pretty jazzed that we've got people from outside of Shorewood who want to come and have a birthday party here, so happy birthday to whoever it is.
I deserve a motion.
Um. Yeah, I just, I, I move to approve the short term cabaret license for Anisha Cockfield in June 25th, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, uh, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right. That takes us out of the consent agenda. Next item, sorry, scrolling. All right, yes, uh, there's no public hearings. Next item is citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Are there any citizens to be heard tonight?
None that have raised their hands when, or. Just Liam back there.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Uh, are there any members of the public, uh, who are joining us remotely who'd like to speak? Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, item A, consider resolution 2023-13, a resolution regarding the WDNR NR 208 2022 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
Ready for a motion, or is that what you were going to do?
Mm hmm, I am.
All right.
So I move approval of resolution 2023 dash 13, a resolution regarding the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources NR 208 2020 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
Second.
It was second? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call. Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, it's a roll call vote, my bad.
You're fired. Please.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, item B, consider reaffirming commitment to resolution of a racial equity framework and resolution for justice and dignity.
Make the motion. Uh, I move to affirm the Shorewood, Shorewood's resolution of a racial equity framework and resolution for justice and dignity.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Uh, reports of village officials, um. Village president has a proclamation for Kay Bruchesny, uh. President Mckegg, can you do this or?
I will defer to the chair.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we'll proceed with the pres, uh, with the, uh, proclamation. Whereas, uh, Kay Bruchesny has served as president of the GFWC Shorewood Women's Club since September of 2019 through May of, May, uh, through May of 2022. And he continued serving as second vice president from September of 2022 through May of 2023. And whereas under her leadership, the Shorewood Women's Club met monthly and benefited from the knowledge and experience of various speakers of interest to the membership. And whereas Kay Bruchesny kept the club alive and engaged through regular Zoom meetings during COVID restrictions. And whereas under her leadership, the Shorewood Women's Club annually contributed $3,000 in scholarships to two students returning UWM and 1,500 to two or more seniors at Shorewood High School who demonstrated both excellence in scholarship and community service. And whereas under her leadership, the Shorewood Women's Club contributed to various charitable and service organizations that serve the community. And whereas, uh, Kay Bruchesny demonstrated creativity in organizing occasional meetings of fun for the membership that included projects such as making capes for children temporarily separated from parents, collections of peanut butter for kinship community food center or hygiene supplies for Sojourner Truth Family Center. And whereas under her leadership, the Shorewood Women's Club members organized various fundraising events such as the wearable art show and the art and antique appraisal event. And whereas under her leadership, the club was represented yearly in the Fourth of July Parade. And whereas under her leadership, the membership remains stable and now includes 51 members. The members of the Shorewood Women's Club wish to thank her for her leadership. And I, Anne McCollum Mckegg, village president, and members of the village board hereby commend and thank Kay Bruchesny for her excellent service to the Shorewood community through her leadership of the GFWC Shorewood Women's Club. Congratulations, Kay Bruchesny. Thank you. Uh, reports from other trustees.
Make a quick, uh, farmer's market starts in, uh, two weeks at Estherbrook, Sundays, 9:30 to 1:00 PM. It's going to be very exciting. Lots of good food, new vendors. Same faces.
What are, what are?
Not this coming Sunday, but the following one.
Nineteenth, the Father's Day weekend. Uh, we got, uh, Short Stack. It's, uh, meat on the street has, is re, you know, reorganized.
Yeah, we're good.
Reorganizing to do pancakes. Um, we are going to be losing Donut Monster and Press Waffles, though, so.
Hmm.
Eh.
Nah.
Yep, yep. So I just have to mention one other thing. I know we all got to get out of here. I do as well, but, um, uh, we've, we've been in a really great working relationship with the Milwaukee County Park System. I feel like over the last, like, you know, two years, um, we have really, uh, they've been extremely complimentary of what we're bringing to the park and, uh, to us as a group. Uh, we've gone above and beyond to work with them, and they're kind of making concessions to do things to help us, like, uh, they're installing gates to help us close the street because right now I literally have to go out at 7:00 AM and put road closed signs in the middle of the road. And it's actually very dangerous because people are trying to drive through and I'm like, you know, they get really mad at you and they, you know, I've, I've been sworn out pretty much every morning, but. Uh, so we won't have to do that anymore. We're going to have closing gates that lock and it'll be much easier and faster to, to block off traffic, so. Um, but they're very complimentary. They love, they love having our farmer's market in the, in the park and they feel like it adds such a, a, a value to, to the area.
All right, any other reports from other trustees? Trustee Stockbrand.
I would just like to thank everybody who was involved in Pollinator Palooza, especially the Conservation Committee. It was a great event. The weather cooperated. And I wanted to thank everyone who helped. Uh, Surf Rider donated, I believe, $2,000. So there were plantings on the beach on Saturday and, uh, some of us worked for three hours hauling stuff up the bluff. A lot of Woody invasives were pulled to the top. Uh, Justin, uh, forester from the village, uh, worked on a Saturday and chopped off a lot of stuff and Ben ran the chipper at the top. And so, and I appreciate all the volunteers that showed up too, to help with surf riders and, and otherwise. And I want to thank the police department for letting me do a ride along last Thursday night.
Uh, I mean, just want to say, uh, thank you to our, um, educators and staff and volunteers for another great school year and congratulations to all of the graduates this year.
Trustee Kudo?
Sorry, one last thing. Uh, I read in Shorewood today that Justin from the rec department is going to be the grand marshal of the Fourth of July Parade, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Justin. That is fantastic. Uh, he has been a huge advocate for specifically my girls participating in Shorewood Rec. And so I think it is an honor well deserved. Awesome.
I agree.
Just like to recognize all the men and women put a lot of hard work into pulling together one of my favorite events of the year, the St. Robert, uh, Fair. So I think it was the best weather possibly on record in two decades for, uh, that event. So it was a good time seeing everybody there. The reports from village manager?
No report.
Okay. Moving on to future items of consideration. There's an item here, request, uh, JP and L committee established Juneteenth as a holiday for nonrepresented employees. So any background?
This was, um, brought forth by President Mckegg. Um, and so if it is the will of the board, this would be an item that would be scheduled at a future date with JP and L.
As chair of JP and L, I would love to have that item come to my committee, please.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, take a vote. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I'll take that as, uh, delay. Uh, yes.
Um, I just had another item for future consideration. I was hoping that we could get some sort of feedback. Um, I know with the debt ceiling legislation, there's gonna be some clawback, and I just, I did, um, ask, uh, the finance director, Mr. Johnson, if we could have some information about if any of our money is in jeopardy. I mean, ours is almost all spent, my understanding. So I think we're good, but I would like to.
So does that re- At committee? Do you wanna report at committee?
Uh, just the next meeting. Uh, well, we, we'll be discussing the long-range financial plan next Monday, so it could be then.
Yeah, do we, do we need a vote on that, or I mean, can you just take that direction?
And you mentioned that you spoke with George? Okay.
Okay. Uh, trustee Stokbrand, are you fine with just having that provided to this direction? Okay, thank you. Trustee Air Sync?
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Any discussion? How are people really feeling about adjourned? All right, uh, take a vote. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Good night.
You did a great job.